Will you please stand and join me in a pledge to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Earlier tonight, we had a closed-door session dealing with real property negotiations regarding the city's interest in the U.S. Post Office building, and I will report out of closed session that we have given direction to our city negotiator. The next item is approval of the agenda. Does staff or any city council member wish to request change to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Then moved by Councilman Soban?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Beehill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. The next item is a staff report, consolidated staff report. Is there any comments or questions of staff as to items in the report? Okay, I don't see any. Is there any member of the public that has any questions or comments regarding the staff report? Okay, and that is an informational item only, so no action is required. Next thing is council updates, beginning on my left with Vice Mayor Paulendorf. Do you have anything to report?
On 4/12, I attended the last segment of the Landscape and Sidewalk Walk of Highway 49 with the design works up. And on the 14th, I attended the Legislative Committee with CAG at the State Capitol, and we met with Bigelow regarding the wagon wheel project, and he was in support of helping us where he can and gave us some guidance on how to proceed with that. And on the 16th, I attended the newly dedicated Tony Tyrell Sports Complex that was in honor of Tony Tyrell. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilman Soban?
Okay, on the March 22nd, I attended the Utica Water and Power Board meeting, at which the general manager and legal counsel contracts were established. The general manager had been on a three-month, kind of see how it worked, agreement with us, and both he and the board thought he was doing a great job, so we now have permanently, Michael Minkler is our general manager. On the 6th, I attended a CAG meeting for Councilman, or Mayor Combe. On the 7th, I attended the kickoff meeting for what's now going to be called the Mark Twain Festival. It used to be called Gold Rush Days, but too many people are using that term, so we've decided to call it the Mark Twain Festival. On the 18th, I attended a LAFCO meeting. At that, most extensive discussions were on the general plan elements for conservation and open space and circulation elements of the general plan. The end product of that will be a letter prepared by the, what is he, general manager?
John.
And then brought back to the board for approval. We approved the budget for '16, '17, and made a minor bylaw amendment which would allow the executive officer, that's his term, to prepare a comment letter or correspondence to appropriate legislative people where a timeframe doesn't permit anything but a special meeting to have a board discussion, but anything that he prepares would be reviewed by the chair or vice chair before it's sent out. That's it.
Okay. Councilwoman Morris?
I have nothing to report.
Councilman Beehill?
Yeah, on March 16th, I attended the IRWMP meeting. We talked a little bit about potential grant money to help with our water infrastructure. On March 22nd, UWPA Board meeting, that Bert already discussed. On April 14th, I attended a Destination Angels Camp Board meeting. Probably the most interesting thing to come out of that was exploring ideas about using social media to better get the word out that Angels Camp is open for business. And on the same day, we had a Utica Power and Water Budget Meeting, and that was probably the darkest of the meetings. We need to be prepared to find ways to fund ever-increasing water delivery costs. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. And I have nothing to report either. Next item is a public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council. On any matter not on the agenda, state law prohibits the city council from acting upon matters not listed on the agenda, and matters raised by the public will automatically be referred to staff or placed on the next meeting's agenda. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address the council on an item not on the agenda? Please state your name and address if you would.
Anne Forrest, 1545 Tryon. I wanted to follow up on Bert's comments to let you know that planning is well underway for Mark Twain Festival, which has been known as Gold Rush Day. It is scheduled for Saturday, October 15th, which is the third Saturday in October, from 11:00 to 5:00. And it will celebrate the 151st anniversary of Mark Twain's stay in Angels Camp, because last year, the 150th had to be canceled. And we've got a very active committee, and it will be a real Gold Rush, Mark Twain-themed event, and we intend to keep that as a permanent name. And we are looking for volunteers.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the city council on an item not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the next item, which is our feature business presentation. And tonight, the feature business is Sugar Bakery. And I'm not going to attempt to pronounce your last name, Christine, because I'm sure I'll miss it. But welcome, Christine.
Thank you. It's Christina Busaidi. And I am the owner of Sugar Bakery. We're located at 1257 South Main Street, right in downtown, next to the salon and across from Nellie Lou's Antiques. I have been in business for one year now, and this first year has been really very wonderful. I feel like I have met my expectations for the bakery. It's a small operation. It's just myself. I get there at 3:00 in the morning, and I bake all day, open the doors at 6 during the week, 7:00 on the weekends, and then I'm open until either 3:00 in the afternoon or 5:00 o'clock on the weekends. You know, and I bake everything fresh daily. Everything is baked on-site, which is how I like it to be. But again, it is a small operation, so it's just me. I have lived in Angels Camp for 15 years, and I live just a block away from downtown, so I have the world's easiest commute, which is fortunate, because I'm getting there at 3:00 in the morning. But I really feel like downtown is, you know, not only is it my place, my business, but it's also my neighborhood. So I feel strongly connected to the downtown. And I've also found that the businesses down there have been very supportive. Destination Angels Camp has been excellent to work with. The Angels Camp Business Association has been really helpful as well. So I felt pretty well supported by the community, for sure. I, you know, a little bit about me, I started kind of baking as a hobby. It was always a way to procrastinate. Either I was in college and I didn't want to do my homework, so I would bake bagels for my roommates, or I'd be at home and I wouldn't want to do housework, so I'd bake up some cookies or something. So just about a year and a half ago, I found myself facing a layoff and decided that the time had come to start a business and open my own bakery. So I attended a year at Columbia College in their culinary program, taking commercial baking classes. And then I had a Kickstarter campaign to help fund my new business. I was able to raise $12,000 through Kickstarter from friends and family, and also members of this community also pitched in and helped get me going. My basic experience in this first year, I feel like I've seen a nice mix of locals as well as tourists. You know, I have people from the community I see all the time who call me for special order cookies. I have some customers who come in and have coffee with me every day, and we sit and chat. But then I also feel like I see quite a few tourists come through. I feel like Angels Camp is uniquely poised right in between Tahoe and Yosemite, so it's a good stopping point. I see a lot of people stopping, wanting to get out of the car, get a bite to eat, stretch their legs. So I've got to meet people from all over the place. We're also really fortunate that we have the WorldMark here in Angels Camp, because there are a lot of, lot of people from out of town come to stay for a whole week, and they're, you know, wandering downtown, looking for things to do and places to eat. So I think that's a real great opportunity for Angels Camp. You know, as far as the business climate downtown, I think things are looking pretty good. I do get feedback, though, from some tourists who are a little concerned about all the empty storefronts that they see. But, you know, I try to explain that things are in flux and businesses are coming and going, and that I feel that we are, you know, really starting to pick up. And that's been my experience from having my business down there for the past year. And I enjoy being an ambassador for Angels Camp, because I do get lots of questions about, oh, well, the frogs, and what are with the frogs, and the Mark Twain, and everything like that. So I feel like I'm an extension of the Visitors Bureau as well.
Great.
Did you have any questions?
Yeah, any questions for Christine?
Yes.
Uh-huh.
What are your three top best sellers?
Cinnamon rolls, pecan pie bars, and either scones or a blueberry coffee cake.
I'm sorry I asked.
Yeah, you'd have to come down and try something sometime.
Well, Christine, we thank you for your vision and your commitment to invest in downtown Angels Camp. It doesn't seem like it's been a year since we had the ribbon-cutting ceremony, but we commend you for doing your part to bring new life into downtown, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
The next item is consent agenda. We have four items on the consent agenda, beginning with approving the minutes of the regular meeting of March 15th, 2016. Item B is adopting a resolution, number 16-12, a resolution approving the road closure of State Highway 49 in the historic district for the Mark Twain Festival, referred to earlier tonight. And item C is a correction to appropriations limit for fiscal year 2003, 2004 through fiscal year 2015, 2016. And the final item is authorization for a sole-source contracting for wetlands mitigation and restoration project. Is there anybody on the council that wishes to remove one of those items from the consent calendar? Seeing none, is there any member of the public that wishes to address one of those items and have it removed from the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to approve items A, B, C, and D.
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved by Councilman Beehill, seconded by Councilman Soban. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. The next item is a report by our city minister updating the implementation of the restoration, mitigation, and wetlands management measures.
Thank you, mayor and council. As you're aware, by title of this report, it's an update on the implementation of the restoration, mitigation of the wetland, and management measures associated with that. It's informational only. There's no action expected or required by the council. By way of background, on May 19th of 2015, the city council approved Amendment Number Two for a professional services agreement with Horizon Water and Environment, otherwise known as Horizon, to prepare a vegetation and sediment removal plan to restore the vegetated area of the main pond to the 1998-as-built wetland boundaries. It included tasks such as maintenance, design, regulatory compliance, sediment testing, construction support, monitor and restoration of the mitigation performances, and technical support for wetland management. To date, Horizon has developed preliminary plans, which was included in your report, and for the general public is on the website, attached as part of this agenda item. So if anyone wanted to see those preliminary plans, they are available for viewing. But in addition, those plans have been submitted to the Army Corps of Engineers and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, as well as the necessary and required permits for those entities as it relates to this project. The LLD intends to manage vegetation and establish a sediment basin within the main pond of the resort. It includes the removing of cattails and other aquatic vegetation, mostly which includes water primrose. But I want to be careful quantifying as to what removal equates to. It doesn't equate to removal of all vegetation. It includes the removal of those which have invaded aggressively the main water portion of the pond. In addition, a small sedimentation basin would also be constructed in the eastern portion of the pond where most stormwater runoff enters. This basin will be also monitored and maintained as part of the LLD, which would help in the future the aggressive nature of the vegetation that occurs. The activity, again, so maintenance activity would be implemented between August 1st and October 1st, in accordance with best management practices. And then ongoing vegetation and sediment management would also be conducted during the seasonal work window in accordance with best management practices. As such, the LLD seeks to implement the maintenance activities under the current permit they have. The LLD intends to submit notification to California Department of Fish and Wildlife. We believe that response is due any day now, because it's been submitted a month ago, and the Army Corps of Engineers has already approved the plans that are included in the packet. Finally, just for clarification purposes, it should be noted that the wetlands are technically considered by the Army Corps of Engineers as waters of the United States and are under the Clean Water Act, which amongst many other items requires protection of streams and wetlands. I say this as not to create expectations that we're doing anything more than maintaining wetlands as they're to be maintained in a natural habitat. We are not bringing this back to a natural or a man-made lake level that may have been present day one, when someone first set foot on this property. This was done to mitigate the natural water wetlands that were here before the subdivision was built, and in the Army Corps of Engineers' mind, they are considered wetlands and will be maintained as wetlands in perpetuity. With that said, this is only an update. You've already approved earlier, tonight, under consent, the need to sole-source the mitigation measures that are part of this mitigation plan. We know of a number of potential bidders, and when we say sole-source, we're talking about a modified sole-source, because there's only two to three potential bidders that would have the equipment that can do the work, that can put in the aquatic equipment that can actually remove this floating mass of cattail that's in the middle of the main lake. With that said, I can answer any questions that you have.
Any questions? Michael? I have a couple. Once Horizon gets comments back or feet or approval from the preliminary plans, it'll be put in final form. Will this council then approve the final drawings before you go into negotiating for a contract?
There'd be no need for the council to approve the plans. Keep in mind, they are preliminary. Horizon is aware of other elements that are part of other projects that were done that could be done in the future, but we're also working within a limited budget. So the preliminary plans have already been submitted to Army Corps of Engineers and Department of Fish and Wildlife, and unless they have any comments to those preliminary, those would become the final plans, short of additional money that we may have in budget that can be done outside of the project area.
Okay. And once a successful contract has been negotiated, will that contract then come back to the council for adoption or approval?
There'd be no need, based on the approval of sole-source earlier tonight.
And then I guess, let me point out, and correct me if I am an error, this, the reason this project is such a mammoth size is because of the ongoing neglect of the wetlands. In the future years, we will continue to do similar projects on a much smaller scale. Is that not true?
That's absolutely correct, and if you were to look at the budget as adopted as part of the LLD engineers' report last year, this project was step one. It included the payoff of this project, because it was a loan from the waste water fund to do so, I'm sorry, the water fund to do so. But we also included, I believe it was $20,000 worth of annual maintenance in each subsequent year over the next 10 years. So this is not the end-all. This is merely the beginning.
Unless there's any other council questions, I would ask, is there any member of the public that has questions or comments regarding Mr. McCattan's report? Please, if you come to the podium and state your name and address.
Dan Lipstru, 568 Spring House Road, Angels Camp. My question, Mike, is that the lake is starting to get a lot of this film on top, and that seems to breed the mosquitoes. And believe it or not, my wife did catch the virus a couple of years ago from a mosquito. So I'm very concerned about the mosquitoes in the lake, and if they're going to be able to spray that or keep it under control.
I would have to, two things. One, talk to Horizon to see what answer they might have, because I know there are a number of mosquito fish that are currently habitating both the main lake and the smaller pond that's adjacent to it. So the mosquito fish should be dealing with that. Now, doesn't mean we can't get more mosquito fish, but removing the large mass of cattails that's floating out there would allow more open water and less habitat for the mosquitoes to grow and populate. And the mayor brought up a very good point, that, you know, this isn't the end-all, this is merely the beginning. This also includes ongoing dialogue and cooperation with the operator of the golf course, or the owner of the golf course, to maintain the peripheral edge of the wetlands. The wetlands are under the guise of the Landscape Lighting District. They are part and parcel to that in helping maintain that, but it's also mostly being maintained through the LLD. They maintain everything up to the wetland, so in concert with them, we need to have that ongoing dialogue with them about how to maintain that edge in order to avoid things of which you're speaking. And there's lots of things that can be done, maintaining the noxious weeds that are there, and the boundaries in between there, and then also keeping water levels at a sufficient level, so you have a continuous flow, so the water doesn't stagnate. So it's an ongoing work in progress in order to do that.
That's great. I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that problem. And I didn't know there were mosquito fish in that lake, so that makes me even feel better there. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions regarding the Wetlands Project Update Report? Okay, seeing none, we will then move on to item two on the agenda, which is the 2016 Fourth of July Picnic in the Park funding request. And that will be submitted by Anne Forrest of the Angels Camp Commemorative Committee.
I believe you have in your packet the letter of the request. Should I go through that again? Or should I just ask if anyone has any questions?
Yeah.
Yes. The Angels Camp Commemorative Committee did not receive funds last August when you were looking at supplemental spending for community activities. We did not receive funds for the Fourth of July, because $8,000 was cut out of our proposed budget. But it's come to our attention over the last month that members of the council, the city, and the public are really hoping that there will be this Fourth of July event. And therefore, we come before you for a supplemental appropriation. We're reducing the cost to some extent, because instead of holding it on the actual Fourth of July, we'll have it on Friday, the 1st of July. It'll be the same events, the salute to veterans, children's games, music, and all of that, but we'll do it in conjunction with the Angels Camp Farmer's Market. And to accommodate the number of people, the veterans and those who come, who, because of limited parking at Utica Park, we will have a, two shuttle buses with wheelchair access that'll run from St. Patrick's to the park and back to help people there. So if we still have time to get this moving, if we have the money to do it, otherwise, we won't have one this year.
And I've got a question.
Yes.
Are the veterans group on the same page as we are with regard to this date and location time?
Yes, yes. And in fact, I just heard this morning from Tony Tyrell with the Angels Camp Veterans Memorial District that they will donate $1,000 to this event, and he understands why it's going to be held on the 1st of July. Two years ago, we did, Fourth of July fell on Friday, and we held it in conjunction with the Farmer's Market. It was really a great event. So then we added vendors last year, and so, and this will be in the early evening, so it should be slightly cooler for participants.
Is there any savings to be had by combining it with a Farmer's Market event?
Yes, yes. Our original budget was 8,000-something, so by having it with the Farmer's Market, we cut down on some of the marketing. We don't get any money from having vendors come, you know, separate vendors come to the event, but we brought it down to $6,458. But that, it actually, that adds, well, the transportation is a very good price of $400. And so, you know.
I know historically, many of the Farmer's Markets, the entertainment for that evening is privately sponsored by a business or so forth.
Yeah.
In this case, that, the cost of that entertainment would, is part of your request?
Is part of our request, because the entertainment that was, has It's part of our request because the entertainment that was, has already been set up was a single person with a guitar, which is very, you know, common on Friday nights, and with the fact that we'll have a stage and a bigger crowd, we thought that we really needed to go with a larger group that would perform, so that's why that's in there.
Okay. And, you made the comment that the veterans have agreed at the last minute to give $1,000.
Yes.
Does that affect this 65%?
Well, it could, yes. We could go to 5,000, I mean, take $1,000 off.
Michael, if the council is supportive of this request, the money would come from general fund reserves. Is that not true?
That's true, and, but it also would be technically part of the 16, 17-year budget since it's after the fiscal year. It would just, as we prepare that budget, we would have that amount. That amount would then be a placeholder in that budget.
But, they would need in advance of those monies probably in current budget year, would they not?
Yeah. Julie, how would we, how would we handle that from a financial standpoint?
Theoretically, it would be better for them to appropriate the money out of the general fund this period since it's going to pre-fund next year, otherwise, we're just kind of doing a counting trick to push it into next year. It would be better if you funded it just out of general funds this year.
Okay. And, if I recall from our last meeting, you gave a promising report on revenues, expected revenues for the year that looked better than what was it originally, and?
Yeah, I mean, nothing's changed from our last budget presentation. Unfortunately, the Fourth of July and budget requests always tends to fall in this gray area. When Ann made the request of how much they needed for ACCC events, commemorative committee events, Fourth of July was coupled together with Gold Rush Days, or now the Mark Twain event at that time, so when she made the statement we wouldn't need any more money, that was specific to the Mark Twain event and not to the Fourth of July event, so. But, to answer your question, the budget position has not changed dramatically since the last presentation.
Okay.
I'm hearing that if, going forward, we should be thinking of the next budget cycle and allocations now for that. Is that a fair interpretation of what I just heard?
For?
Both you and Julie?
For Mark Twain or for?
For these two events. If we're going to do both, and the timing is such that the July 4th one is awkward because of budget cycles, we'll cover this one by general fund, but for the future, we should be thinking of a target?
I would, I would separate the two. I would not combine them as a singular issue.
Okay.
Because they really are separate.
Yep.
And done at different times, and I would think of them separate, and we are covered for Mark Twain at this point in time. That is a discussion for next, next May.
Okay. Good enough.
Any additional questions of Ms. Forrest? Or any comments?
I'll wait for comments. I'll wait.
Okay. Well, with that, I'll entertain a motion to act on the request in whatever form.
Wait, are we deducting $1,000, or we're going to keep the six?
That would depend on the motion. And, maybe, before we get to that, is there any other members of the audience that wishes to comment on this item? Okay?
Yeah, this, when we had our budget meeting last, earlier in the year, we spent a lot of time trying to figure out how to stretch our dollars and, you know, where we can, where can we spend, what do you need to have? And, I remember the bare minimum we could get away with was X amount of dollars, and we actually approved that. Since then, I know the revenue pieces are looking a little bit better for next year, but also, we've got a large hit coming from our water department, a couple hundred thousand dollar hit coming, and so, I feel like this has been asked and answered. I feel like we've been asked for this money earlier. We made a heart-wrenching, difficult decision just to limit the funds that were given, and now, we're being asked for it again, and I just, I don't, I just don't think it's right.
Yeah, technically, you've not been asked for July 4th money for 2016 yet. You were asked for July 4th, 2015 before. This has not been asked for yet.
Yeah.
When, when they came to you for their request before, it was to cover the Fourth of July for 2015 expense, not, not for this event. This has not been requested.
Just one further point, your reference to, to this anticipated cost even with water, that's an enterprise fund, and that, that would be dealt with differently than the funding source we're talking about for this.
That, yes, that would come out, that would come out of the water fund, this would, the Fourth of July event would be the general fund, yes.
Okay, so this was not asked and answered, this was, this is a separate?
This is a separate request.
Okay.
A new request.
Then, I'll move, we go ahead and approve $5,500 for the Fourth of July picnic in the park funding.
$5,500?
$5,500.
$5,500 even? Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I will second it.
Okay. It's been moved in second to approve an appropriation of $5,500 to the Angels Camp Commemorative Committee for putting on a 2016 Fourth of July event. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That carries unanimously.
Thank you. We'll get to work.
Okay. The next item is adopt a resolution awarding park upgrades project to John Allen Construction. City Engineer Dave Myers, you have a report.
Well, thank you. What I'm bringing to you tonight is a project that, for your consideration, to award some of the CDBG funds that we got last year. CDBG is Community Development Block Grant.
Excuse me, Dave, could you pull that microphone over more there?
I can't see anymore. I'm sorry. What I'm bringing to you tonight is a project to award some of the CDBG money that we received last year and Community Development Block Grant, CDBG is Community Development Block Grant funds. If you remember, we selected a series of eligible projects that narrowed it down to what we could, what we thought we could afford, which were mainly the projects in the parks. We wanted to do some improvements at Utica Park around the bathrooms and some of the walkway, and then we wanted to demolish the pool at Tryon Park. So, even then, with, with having a short amount of funds, we put into the proposal a nat alternate so that we could use the funds as much as we possibly could. So, we went out to bid, and the bids we received showed that we could only afford the base bid, and of that, the base bids, the lowest bid was John Allen Construction out of Santa Clara. But, we do have an interesting twist that's happening. CDBG is changing the rules now, and if we, if we hurry up and spend the funds, well, then we can put another application in this coming year. To streamline the process, I added a little twist on the resolution in that we would authorize the city manager to approve any change orders. It's not expected that there will be any large amount of change orders, but I was just wanting to make sure that we can get all the money spent quickly so we can turn around and go for another application. So, basically, that's it. It's just a project to fix a little bit of work in the, in the parks, and I was going to make a recommendation that we award the project to John Allen Construction.
Okay, thank you. Any council questions?
No, it's not part of this proposal, but is there, on your horizon, some possible repair work at Gateway Park in the restroom there?
You know, we looked at that when we selected these projects, so it's still a project in, in our minds, but it's really going to be dependent on what kind of funding we can get.
Okay. Just want to know it's on your list.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's on the list, and then we also had a discussion about the creation of a dog park, a Gateway Park. One, one of the ideas we came up with is there's currently fencing that is around the pool building at Tryon Park, and that we would try to retain ownership of that fencing to help construct that dog park at some point in time, so we're trying to maximize that as well, so.
Okay. Any other council questions? Is there any members of the public that would like to comment on this agenda item? Okay, if not, I will entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 16-13, awarding the park upgrade, Utica Park project to John Allen Construction.
I'll move that.
And, I'll second.
Okay, move by Councilman Soban, seconded by Councilman Beehill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And, that passes unanimously as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Item four is appoint additional members to the Stakeholders Committee for the Sustainable Communities Grant. Dave Hanum has a report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you tonight is an item regarding selecting additional members for the Stakeholders Committee or Sustainable, for our Sustainable Communities Grant. About two meetings ago, three meetings ago, we selected the majority of the meeting, however, we forgot to select the two council members or one or two council members, and we had one additional application from Ann Forrest that was interested as a property owner in the downtown, and so, we wanted to bring that back to the council to make sure we had our council appointments as well as being able to add Ann Forrest to the committee. So, it brings the committee to approximately 15 people, 16 people, which is about what we had for the last Stakeholders Committee for the Partnership Planning Grant, and so, it's a good, it's a, it's a good number, and it's not going to overload the committee. So, staff is recommending that you, that you appoint one or two of yourselves and Ann Forrest as a part of the Stables Community Advisory Committee.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. A question to Derek, can we do this all under one motion, or should we address Ann Forrest's application first and then identify one or two council people?
It's really at your pleasure. There's no legal limitation on doing it either way, so really, it's what you think is most convenient.
One thing I would ask of Dave is what is the duration of this committee, and how long do you believe the committee will be in place?
The committee will meet probably five or six times over the next 18 months, so, yeah, there could be.
Ideally, it would be a council member that will be here through the duration of
the project, or council members that would be here through the duration of the project.
And, if, if there were council members appointed tonight that were no longer in office, could they continue to serve as residents to that committee, or would they be replaced by a new incoming council person?
They would be, they could be grandfathered in as a resident, but a subsequent new council person should also be replaced at that time.
Sure.
And, that happens, that happens throughout committees, so.
Right.
With reelections.
Well, I certainly concur with, with what's being implied. I would like to see our most newly elected council people, at least one of them, put on that committee.
I'll volunteer to do that.
Okay, okay. Amanda, do you have any interest in serving as well?
I don't mind being alternate.
An alternate to?
To Scott. If that works.
Councilwoman Morris or Councilman Soban, do you have an interest in serving?
I guess the answer is no.
No?
No.
Okay. I would not mind serving, knowing that in a few months, I would not be a council person, and then I could either continue on as a resident or be replaced. So, I would volunteer as a second person. So, with that said, then I think we could entertain a motion to appoint Ann Forrest, property owner, Scott Beehill, councilperson, and myself, Wes Cullum, as councilperson to the Stakeholders Committee.
And Amanda, Amanda?
As an alternate. I'm sorry, Amanda.
No.
Okay. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved, I'll move. Yeah.
Moved, moved by Councilman Morris, seconded by?
I may as well be so bold as to second.
You will? Okay. Seconded by Councilman Soban. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
Okay, the next item is to conduct a public hearing to adopt ordinance number 474, adding chapter 27 to Title VIII concerning cultivation of marijuana. And, I'll ask our city attorney, is there any oral report you'd like to add to what?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, no. I think we've discussed this, I think this is the fifth time we've discussed this overall issue, and so, I have nothing to add. I think the council knows what's before it, but just so I'm clear tonight, what the authority is, you can adopt the ordinance as written, you can choose not to adopt the ordinance. If you wish to make any changes, those would need to be made and come back to you for a, if they're minor and you can make them tonight, and it's clear for me and Mary, we can make the changes tonight, and then we would have to introduce or consider the ordinance for approval at a future meeting. If there are wholesale changes and I need to do some drafting, then we would basically start the two-step process over again. So, that's procedurally what, what tonight entails, and I will stop there and answer any questions.
As I recall, the last time we addressed, there was some identification of a minor correction. Has that been made already? And, you indicated you would handle it. I don't know exactly what it was, but I think, nice, Mayor, Paulendorf?
I believe, oh, I'm sorry. I believe it's?
Is instruction B.
B, and it should say to possess medical marijuana pursuant to state law. So, I'll make sure that that's, the words or cultivate, if you look at your Page Two of the ordinance, the words or cultivate appear in that section B at the bottom line, or the, technically, the bottom line is the word law, but the line right before that says to possess or cultivate, so we would strike the words or cultivate, and that was, and I apologize that that didn't get into the packet, that's my responsibility, I didn't get that to Mary, but the ordinance, if you approve it tonight, would, would delete that language, and I'd make sure that gets to Mary.
Okay. All right. Well, this is a, a public hearing item, and typically, the way we will do that is, we'll open the public hearing, members of the audience, we'll have an opportunity to address the council. The strict rule is three minutes per person, but we will be reasonable and generous. If you're in the middle of making a point, we're not going to cut you off, but we look, would appreciate it if you keep your remarks precise and to the point, and we can get through this efficiently. Once all the public testimony has been heard, we'll close the public hearing, we'll open it up to the council for any additional questions of the city attorney, or questions of each other, and then hopefully, make a decision at that point. So, with, with this, I'll open the public hearing, and anybody that wants to address the council on this item, please come forward to the podium.
Furman Brown, 301 Acorn, 313 Acorn. I reminded you last meeting that the city of Carmel has a resolution that is working very well. They prohibit the distribution and sale of marijuana in Carmel, and also, the production of marijuana in Carmel. And, I think that we are just as smart as the city council in Carmel. So, I urge you to oppose the growing and distribution of marijuana here in Angels Camp. Also, we know that there is a pot store in Santa Clara, which is 10 miles away, and I think that if we need medical marijuana as such- I think that if we need medical marijuana as such, ten miles is not very far to go. I also have for you tonight copies for each one of you, and this is the impact on Colorado for the legalizing of marijuana, the claims and the evidence. A lot of times that people say, well, it's going to create an awful lot of revenue coming in. A couple of things, that revenue has fallen in Colorado by forty-four percent. The marijuana revenue for Colorado is 0.7 percent. So as far as Colorado making money off of the marijuana industry, it does improve and it has a source of these numbers. Also, it has what happened to traffic fatalities. Driving fatalities increased eight percent from 2013 to 14. Marijuana-related fatalities increased 154 percent from nineteen, from 2006 to 2014. DUI arrests increased dramatically, as noted earlier. Alcohol consumption rose four percent. So marijuana is not replacing alcohol. One other thing I'd like to say in the, in conclusion, I'm going to give you this report, it says, "Conclusion: Every reason given to support legalization of marijuana has been proven false in Colorado, while every reason opposing legalization has been shown to be accurate." So I ask you to follow what's happening in Colorado, also follow what's happening in Carmel, and to vote no on distribution and cultivation here in Angels Camp. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Here's to these reports, there's five.
Just go ahead and put it down. We're talking.
Yeah, you can pull it, pull it towards you.
Pull it towards me.
There you go.
Okay. My name is Kimberly McCarthy. I've been a resident in Angels Camp for fifteen years. I live at 253 Point Drive. I'm an avid gardener. I love the beauty of our area. I like clean air. I like, I like healthy people. I have a real problem with the growing of pot in that it's used, it's used with an awful high incident of chemicals, which will drain into our water systems. Water seems to be a big issue. Guess what? We're in a drought and I don't really want our water table contaminated by large grows. If somebody wants to have a pot of pot in their home somewhere other than City of Angels, I think that's fine. But I urge you, all five of you, to not approve pot growing in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Dan Pennell. I live at 1260 Gold Cliff here in Angels Camp. I don't think it makes sense to do this in our city limits. I don't feel that personally my tax dollars should be used for a cash business that pays no taxes and supports us. I don't think my taxes should be used to protect their crops from the criminal element that follows. I don't want our children endangered by the criminal element pot growing brings to a community, and we all read those articles in the paper all the time, it's happening up north. And I think it's going to hurt the only thing we have going for us, which is tourism and building homes for retired people. I don't think that's compatible with our, what we have as an industry here. And like she said, where are we going to get the water to do this? We don't have ag meters. We're talking about filtered city water that's for drinking purposes, not for agricultural purposes. And I don't think we should have to change, I don't think I should have to change my life to accommodate this. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Tommy Hayes. I live on Mark Twain Road in the city limits. I would like to voice my opposition to the proposed ban. First, I'd like to thank the council and your thoughtfulness. This is like the fifth time we've gone through this, so you haven't made any rash decisions. But at the same time, I'm kind of disappointed in the lack of synthesis by the council. We've had extensive workshops, multiple public comment periods, and the issue doesn't have to be so polarized. There's not binary to ban or not to ban positions. There's a full spectrum of options here. I feel like it's the council's distinct position as intermediary to manufacture that compromise for everybody. And the city attorney has suggested explicitly, as the law will allow him, that he can, that you guys can amend the ordinance in, well, he can amend the ordinance in accordance to the council's wishes, but the suggestions need to come from the council, none of which has been put forth yet. I do not believe Angels Camp is ready for commercial installations, although with proper guidelines and leadership, I could envision this industry having a respectful and functional position in the community. I do believe personal and caregiver gardens still have a place in the city. A square footage designation is as complex as the edit would need to be in the new ordinance. And I think that would be acceptable compromise for all those with measured opinions on the subject. The March deadline has been repealed, so I question why we still have this knee-jerk and urgent reaction to push a ban through. We currently have nuisance ordinance and laws to deal with non-compliant individuals, and I don't see how the proposed ban will change or ameliorate those enforcements. I do, I do believe that we're just trying to put, push this through fast as possible and kid it behind us, but cannabis is going to be a persistent subject into the future and it won't end with this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is John Broder. I live at 1860 Finnegan Lane. I have spoken before the council four times previous to this. This will be my fifth. My position has not changed. I disagree wholeheartedly with the previous comments that that person who is a pro-pot person made. None of those arguments are a good argument for banning or for not banning marijuana. Furman Brown made some comments that I agree wholeheartedly with. I had distributed to you a month or two ago, 182-page report from Colorado that lists all of those things that Furman mentioned. They are all bad. Colorado is not making any money off of it. And I was last, I was in Santa Clara Valley Monday for doctor's appointments, and I picked up a copy of their throwaway paper that comes out once a week called the Metro. The last four pages of that probably thirty-page throwaway paper were full-color ads for marijuana that you could buy, plus ads for the celebration that's going to go on in San Francisco on the twentieth of April, 4/20. 4/20 is code word for marijuana because of an AB 4/20 or something, I don't know. If these are seriously ill people, seriously ill people are allowed to have marijuana for their illness. These are seriously ill people, tens of thousands of them, going to San Francisco to smoke marijuana in the park and listen to music. That seems to me that these people are getting around the intent of seriously ill medicine. People don't gather in the park and hurrah and have a lot of fun if they're seriously ill taking any medicine that you can buy at CVS. So I think it's all a big sham and we can do without it. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
I'm Robert Reed. I live at 792 Triple Load in Angels Camp and it's, I would like to ask a question of the council. I'd like to have you give us what your knowledge is of what the Angels Camp police think of this issue. I wonder, certainly this is something that would need some enforcement if you had commercial grows within the city, and that's going to fall upon the city to enforce this. So it's, I think it's an item that the police in Angels Camp should address. Also, we have six churches within the city. We have two schools. I know that there are some, some legal requirements in terms of distance of certain types of businesses from schools and churches, and it seems to me we have very little area within the city that isn't near a church or a school. And also, we don't have any large growing areas within the city, so commercial growth of marijuana seems impossible to fit within this city without it impacting the citizens. I, well, I think that's the bulk of my comments. I'd like to hear from the council as to what the opinion is of our police chief and our police community in regard to this issue. Thank you.
Okay. And just a brief response, once the public hearing is closed, members of the council may very likely address that. I can tell you that in past similar public hearings, we've heard testimony from our police chief, we've heard testimony from the district attorney on that. So I think we have a pretty good background of the public safety, police impacts.
Can you share with us what that is?
My name is Jack Lynch at 600 Selkirk. I could address that. The police chief of, and this is the main point that I'd like to make, our police chief has urged the council not to allow the cultivation of marijuana. At the last public meeting that we had here, we also had the county district attorney speak with great passion about the impact on the, on the safety of the community if cultivation of marijuana is engaged in. So I would urge the council, based on public safety and the obligation that the council has for full protection of public safety, to please go forward and, and vote in favor of this ban on cultivation. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Adrian Nestor, 625 Mecklenburg Way, Angels Camp. Before you vote on this, and you may not be able to do this, but I would like to have you go through an exercise. Take out a piece of paper, which I carry in my wallet, and put down all the things that have changed in your life since you became a person of reason, maybe seven or eight years old, that you don't like. Then go down that list and put how many of them are laws, which means if you don't like it, you can't do anything about it today. And I think you're going to be amazed at how big your list is and what it's doing for somebody my age at least. It certainly has changed my life and the country that I love so much. And I think you should do that before you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Rosalie Callahan. I live on Mark Twain Road in Angels Camp. I've been in the city limits for thirty years and I'm here to ask of you to reconsider your position on the currently proposed ban. By banning cultivation altogether, you're taking away patients' rights to obtain their medicine a safe and discreet way. Instead, consider only banning large commercial operations. I believe you all have well-meaning intentions with this ban. However, I ask that it is edited in its current form so that caregivers and patients alike are not excluded. Through education and outreach, we can help protect what so many of us love about Angels Camp while allowing those with medical needs the safe access that they deserve to their medicine. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live on Finnegan Lane and I have a business here in Angels Camp. One of the things that I'd really like to point, like you guys to consider as you make your final decision on this issue, is that the premise of marijuana use in California, as you know, is medical. The statute does say seriously ill. According to the American Cancer Society, there's approximately 327 individuals in Calaveras County total suffering from serious cancers. And so if we extract that Angels Camp has roughly 10% of the population, then we can assume that there's maybe forty rounding up people living within the city limits of Angels Camp with cancer. Many of those probably don't choose marijuana as any form of treatment. And I'd really like to point out the thing that we have not heard in all of these hearings, we have not heard from one single local doctor, not a Dr. Kirpin, not a Dr. Thompson, no single local doctors have been here and said, "I have ten patients in Angels Camp and they must grow their own marijuana." I think that what we're seeing is the few people who are local aren't really seriously ill. And as I mentioned at another time, Angels Camp is simply too small. It's a very small city. We don't have a lot of area. There is just no reason to have such a thing that has the potential for such disruption. We don't have the infrastructure to manage it. We've all been on water reduction for years now, and so all of our efforts at, you know, catching water in buckets in the shower and watering our house plants with it, all of a sudden our overall water reduction is going to be blown out the window from something that needs a vast amount of water to do. Anyway, I really hope that you guys are able to make the decision and put this ban in place tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Yu, District Attorney. You'll forgive me, I have a little bit of a cold. I don't want to repeat my comments from the last meeting about the issues regarding public safety and the types of cases we see at my office resulting from marijuana. But I do want to reiterate that because of Angels Camp and its size and all of the issues that you've taken so long to consider, a ban is appropriate for Angels Camp for, for all those reasons I don't want to repeat. Your decision last time was well-considered and you put a lot of work into it. If you are thinking, well, you know, maybe this is very complex and there are some intricacies that we want to delve into further, I think you still have the luxury of doing that. You can pass the ban and you can still continue to study the issue more thoroughly. For instance, if there are patients that come forward, the economics of it, is there a revenue stream? Are we different from Carmel? Would it work differently? I don't know. But I think it's very important for you to follow through on the direction you've taken that you've put all this time into and give the public the leadership that it's looking for. Don't leave it murky. I think that all of you probably are aware of what's going on in the outlined county areas with what's been dubbed the green rush and some of the chaos that has resulted from the lack of the county board of supervisors' ability to go forward with the urgency ordinance that just came up. So you have spent a number of sessions on this. I believe attorneys stated that it was five. This is the fifth session. So you've done the work. I would urge you to go ahead with your decision from last time and vote in favor of the ban. That does not foreclose you from continuing to study the issue and amending it at some future date should there be a compelling need. This is the commercial cultivation of medical marijuana, and certainly there are the other issues that go along with the MMRS A, which I assume you'll be dealing with at a future date. Are you going to be allowing a testing facility? Are you going to be allowing a manufacturing facility, either volatile or non-volatile manufacturing? Are you going to be allowing a major distribution center in the county? Is, is that the right direction in the city limits? Is that the right direction for the city? Are you going to start allowing the retail storefronts? So this, the MMRS A as a whole is a very complex, new, commercial industry, and there's all those different parts that have to be dealt with. This is the first step. I think it's appropriate for Angels Camp and I hope that you still believe it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody, any other speakers that want to address the council on this issue? If not, I will close the public hearing. I think I see one.
Good evening, council. Good evening, council. TJ Gallagher from Angels Camp in Bear Valley. You know, I've had a lot of personal experiences with, with illnesses in my family, unfortunately. Really close friends with cancer, first cousin with cancer my age, an aunt with cancer, an uncle with cancer, and grandparents with cancer. So, you know, when, when I look at the ship that I'm sailing on right now, I'm not feeling very good. very good about, you know, that. You know, when I feel a pain, I'm like, oh, no, you know? That's how it started with my cousin, a pain in his lower back, and six months later, he passed away. The, you know, he did find a lot of relief in, in the use of medical marijuana. My aunt, on the other hand, and I'm sorry I'm so personal right here with this, but my aunt, on the other hand, she's now in the nursing home, not from the cancer, it's from the, the opiates that were prescribed to her afterwards, and the addiction that resulted from, from the opiates and the prescriptions under the doctor's care. So, you know, there, you know, when I'm looking at this, you know, what's happening, I, I think that, you know, patients have, should have a choice here, and I, yeah, they, they could go down the road, maybe get it 10 miles away, but you know what? That costs a lot of money. It really does. And, you know, these statistics here, like when I took my statistics class, getting my master's in aeronautical science, the best part about statistics are you could skew, skew them any way you want to, okay? So, don't believe everything that you read. You know, I encourage you to do your own research. And on top of that, you know, it's, it's not a money issue to me, or it's just, it has to be a, it could be small, you know? It could be whatever you make it, you know? But I just, I disagree with the ban. I think you're really doing a disservice to people that need it. Right now, there could be somebody in this room with cancer that doesn't even know they have it, and this would give them a lot of relief, you know? And there probably is. So, you know, consider that when you're going through with your decisions. And, you know, there's a lot of other illnesses besides cancer that patients benefit from through the use of medical marijuana, and there's definite proof of that. And, you know, I just wanted to make my point. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing. And the public hearing is closed. At this point, the deliberation will be amongst five of us as council people. If there's any additional questions of our staff or any comments that anybody wants to make, now's the time to do it.
I'll make my, I'll make a comment. I'll read my comment. After having more time to review the several bills recently signed by the governor, namely the Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act, which contains numerous rules and regulation to be put in place to regulate the medical marijuana industry, it has become extremely evident to me that the city does not have the staff, nor the money, or time to enforce the cultivation of marijuana in the city of Angels Camp. In addition, anyone living in Angels Camp in need of medical marijuana for their specific illness and having the proper permits and medical cards will have other avenues to acquire their medication. Therefore, I will be supporting the ordinance number 474 banning the cultivation of marijuana within the city of Angels Camp because I believe this is in the best interest of the community as a whole to protect, protect the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Angels Camp.
Sure. I appreciate everybody's discussion in this, and after our fifth time reviewing this issue, I don't believe we are rushing into any kind of decision here. My personal experience as a, as an owner of a care facility for the elderly, I have seen instances where marijuana does have a positive effect on people. It literally is, the choice is, use marijuana, and I can get up and, and move around during the day, or use Oxy or use a hydrocodone or something, or morphine, and I'm in bed all day. So, it is a lifestyle changer. However, if this was just about legitimate medical marijuana, we probably wouldn't even be here. The abuse that is so prevalent now shows where the true incentives lie. And as, as much as I appreciate the, the benefits that could be had when this is operated correctly, we simply don't have the resources. And without proper regulation, proper infrastructure, to consider anything other than a ban in this case would be irresponsible and, and probably even reckless. So, I, I think I need to support the ban for the, for the marijuana, and it's been, it's been a tough decision for me.
Any other comment?
Okay. I'm also in favor of the ban on the growing of any marijuana within the city limits of Angels Camp. I think a lot of great points have been made with regard to the impact that's been seen in California, in Colorado, in Washington, and every other place that has legalized the use of both medical or commercial entertainment use. And I especially agree with Scott's assessment about misuse. This county is experiencing a land rush that is, there was a great attempt to try and institute a emergency ordinance to put some controls on it, but for some reason, three of the supervisors didn't see fit to, to do that. And I'm really disappointed in those three supervisors. Fortunately, our District Four supervisor voted in favor of it. The, at a previous meeting, I referred to some data that's available from the California Medical Marijuana Program website, and I looked again today, and there is cards issued for legal use and caregiver having medical cards for using marijuana, transporting, having it in their possession and using it. And in the last calendar year, these cards have to be renewed every year. In the last calendar year, the Calaveras County had 22 cards issued. That was as of October. Our neighbor, Anadore County, had only seven. Toowalome County had only six. Are there that many critically ill people in the area to justify all these grows? I don't think so. And then, I think that's enough.
Can I share a poll?
I'm the odd man out. I do not support this ban. And as much as I recognize all the controversy and the discussion surrounding this, I think we're missing the bigger picture. We keep talking about commercial grow. We keep talking about distribution, and what we're not focusing on is medical. By banning this, we have not solved the problem. We can't keep arguing moral issue. If it is, then we should start closing down the streets and stopping alcohol if we're going to keep, continue to argue that. We've already seen what prohibition does, and it doesn't work. We need to step up and create regulation that will provide a solution. We need to utilize the provision within the state law to allow these patients the right under the law. And I, as said in previous meetings, we have adequate audience, audiences already in place that can properly regulate this within the city. We are not here to allow, not here to allow medical small growth because we don't like it. We need to remember we're focusing on the patients, and we need to allow compassionate exception in this ban. If we are going to consider a ban, we need to look into what compassion is and continue to support the right of those passion, those patients. And I would like to see regulation passed before the rest of this council leaves, instead of you guys being in the audience watching this continue. By banning it tonight, the conversation still will continue. We still have an obligation to do what's right and ensure that we protect those rights of those patients under the state law. And I would hope, and I wish that council would consider that. But I know, based on, it's not going to go that way. But I would really like us to explore that because I think we have adequate tools in front of us, both at the state level and the local level, to make a proper regulation, whatever we deem necessary, and whether that's how many plants, or whether that's inside. I don't know what it is, but I think we still have the obligation to explore that.
Thank you.
Can I respond? Absolutely, yes. Okay.
I think what was said earlier is that even if we vote in a complete ban of growth of marijuana, there is an opportunity in the future. The district attorney made this clear.
Yes, but...
That as we learn more information, and there are controls, regulations, policies, procedures in place.
They already are.
They aren't in place, otherwise, we wouldn't have what we're experiencing. And I didn't come into this with a lack of knowledge. This is my pile of research right here. I'm well, I'm willing to loan this to you, and I hope that you would be willing to read it and get a more objective opinion. That's all I have to say.
Well, I will voice my opinion on the matter. And from the very first time we, we met on this and we heard public testimony, I was supportive of the concept of, as Vice Mayor Fallendorf says, we need to focus on the medical side of it. And I'm sure there's, there is truly a small percentage of the population with serious cancer problems that gets some medical relief from marijuana. I would be only interested in addressing the lower-income subgroup of that, ones that can't afford to go to outside the city limits or, or can't afford to buy medical marijuana whatsoever. What we're talking about here is not, is not prohibiting people from access to medical marijuana. We're just simply saying we don't want you to produce it in the city. So, I started thinking, okay, so, there's this very small group of people, low income, seriously ill, probably with some physical constraints, and I think the city of Sonora council tried to struggle with the same thing, and they, they said, well, how could we craft an ordinance that would give that low-income person some access to inexpensive marijuana? But at the same time, as Mr. Pennell says, why should he, he and his property be affected by what other people are doing? And so, I was thinking, well, if you, if you write an ordinance where you require a screening wall, where you require a certain setback from your neighbors, where you require things that, that prohibit odors, where you require things that it be covered, and say, okay, you can grow personal marijuana if you do all these things. Well, you've just defeated, defeated the very purpose with which you started out, to try to create an affordable option for marijuana. Those people that need it most can't afford to do all those things, and I think the city council of Sonora realized that, and they, I haven't been following the story, but I think they're taking a whole different approach. So, I think in the greater good, the best interest of the city are to support the ordinance as presented tonight to call for the ban. We're not saying that truly needy people are denied access to medical marijuana. We're just simply saying our town is too small. We live in urban environment, not an agricultural countryside, and there will be impacts on other people. And I won't, I won't support that, those kind of conditions. So, I will vote also in favor of adopting the ordinance as submitted. With that, any other comments?
I have one comment. This, is there a reason, Derek, that we're making this medical marijuana as opposed to all marijuana throughout the ordinance?
Because recreational marijuana is not legal, so it has, you only...
Well, it might be redundant now, but this might save us a step later on if that's where we want to go.
It was drafted that way because at this time, the only quasi-legal use of marijuana is for medical uses, usage. But I note that the term "medical marijuana cultivation" shall mean the planting, growing, harvesting, drying, or processing of marijuana plants or any part thereof, and then the cultivation, medical marijuana cultivation is prohibited. So, literally speaking, it doesn't matter what the purpose is of the, the cultivation, but that is something we can clean up. But if we, if we do that tonight, we're not able to take final action on the ordinance. We would have to bring it back.
Is it worth cleaning up? Is the...
Do it during later days.
It is today. You're right.
I don't think there's anything...
Okay. If it's not worth cleaning up, just a question.
I think that we should approve it as written, with the one minor change that Derek pointed out on page two, the, for cultivation on bottom of B, paragraph B.
Are you willing to make that in form of a motion?
I will.
Okay. Mr. Councilman Soban just made a motion. I'll let him...
I move that we adopt an ordinance, the ordinance adding chapter 8.27, 8.27 of the City of Angels municipal code concerning cultivation of marijuana as presented to us tonight, with the exception of the elimination of the two words on the last line of paragraph B, middle of the page, page two.
Okay. It's been moved. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Been seconded by Councilwoman Morris. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It has been asked for a roll call vote, so I will begin to my right, Councilman Beehill.
Aye.
Councilwoman Morris.
Yes.
Councilman Soban.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fallendorf.
Nay.
And myself, as mayor, vote yes. So, that passes on a four to one vote. Thank you all for taking time to participate in this. This is a very important issue the city has to deal with, and we appreciate your input. The last item is, Ms. Kelly will review the calendar for their...
Okay. Tomorrow, the 20th is at 10:30 is the COG-TAC meeting at COG. On the 21st, at 8:30 is the museum commission meeting. Tuesday, the 26th is UWPA at 5:30. On the 28th is DAC Executive Committee. And then, on May 3rd, the city council meets again.
All right. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Soban, seconded by Councilman Beehill. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you all.
Bye.
Bye.